Okay.
Yeah. It's a total that while recording is on.
I know, this is kind of weird. Alright, I'll take it. So, um, taking a look quick here at, um, the overview that is in the test and review materials folder. So what I did is just kind of broke it into the six sections that we did and gave you a big picture for each of them. So definitely take a look through those, but if you want, I can just start right on with cell signaling and make sure you're solid there. And then we can go on from there. And if anyone else joins, we can address those questions as they come.
Okay, so endocrine, paracrin, autocrin, and then juxtacrin?
Yeah, yeah. Love the term juxtacrin, but we'll kind of use various terms in there. Yeah? So, go ahead.
Uh, okay, so, yeah, okay, uh, cut it.
Okay, I'm just making sure that my tablet works. Okay, can you see that I just wrote on the screen?
Yes.
Oh, that's so cool. Alright, so let's go ahead and start right off with, um, actually, let me just send a quick update. So that anyone that wants to join knows that I am on FYI, I'm currently live.
Let me check Jack, because I guarantee you he wants to be on.
Who's that?
Okay, I think Jack would want to be on. Let me check, text Jack and see if he's actually up today.
And then we'll go back to the review materials. Okay, so. Okay, I'm gonna start going over kind of some cell signaling. Like I said, if anyone joins, great. If not, hey, private tutor for an hour and a half, so enjoy. Um, let's start by looking at just how, okay, we know we have some kind of signal that comes into a cell, right? And we can talk about what exactly that signal is, but I'm just gonna write a signal, right? Some kind of ligand. Um, remember that ligand is like the signaling molecule, um, when we're looking at chemical signaling, right? The first unit that we looked at is how does a cell then respond to that signal? So we have signals that can directly enter the cell, and then we have some that can't, that are kind of stopped on the cell surface. The ones that can enter are the ones that are hydrophobic. Can you hear my kids in the background?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, so the ones that can go straight through are the hydrophobic ones, because they can like dissolve through the membrane and get inside. So those are gonna be like steroid hormones? Or other fat soluble material? Um, and they're not gonna need a surface membrane receptor. They're gonna go right on through, and then their receptor is gonna be what's called an intracellular receptor. So far, so good?
Uh, yeah, most of that was review.
Okay, and then the ones that have to have the outside receptor, that's where we have those three steps. So we've got one, which is reception. And then we have something that happens in the cell, which is transduction.
And then response.
Perfect. And that response is really varied. So we mainly focus on, for this unit, how, like, what are the types of receptors and what are the types of transduction cascades that can happen? And then in this chapter here, like in the examples of cell signaling, we looked a lot more at what that response can be, okay? So let's go ahead and start by looking at reception. Okay, um, when we're, typically when I talk about reception, I'm only talking about this right here as it has to do with, um, hydrophilic molecules, so ligands that cannot go through the membrane. So since they can't go through the membrane, they're gonna have to land on a receptor on the outside. And then whatever the signal is, kind of gets called into the inside, almost like, um, like if you have someone land on your shores during times of attack. I don't know where I'm going with this, but follow me through here, right?
Did you have someone with a ligand and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, your level is way more on point, so let's run with that. Alright, so back over to reception, right? We have to have a ligand that's on the inside, some kind of receptor, and then whatever, um, like this receptor has to go all the way through the cell membrane, and then on the inside, that's gonna then signal for more changes to happen. And remember that protein shape is super duper duper important. And so the fact that this ligand bonds here on the outside is going to change the shape of the inside and cause that response to happen, okay? So when we talk about receptors, the three kinds that you should be thinking about, I'm doing A, B, and C, because point one was, um, the reception. So the G protein coupled receptor, the, um,
K R thing, RTK that.
Okay, and the ion channel. Okay?
Let's just switch up all the letters.
I know, a lot of letters. So G protein coupled receptor, receptor, so in both cases, receptor. Um, RTK is receptor tyrosine kinase. Let's go through what each of those dug, do, do, does. Sound good?
I think I know GPDR, because it binds to the GCPR, and then it takes the GDP and changes it into DTP, which then takes off of the G protein, that. And that goes to the enzyme, which activates, activates something, but that's not.
Exactly it. No, it activates something, and then that something has some kind of transduction. So you're exactly right. So just to kind of clarify that up, when the ligand binds, the inside changes shape, that's going to allow for the G protein with its associated GDP to come in. Once that happens, let's go ahead and move this guy. I think I can. Amazing. Um, the GDP is gonna get kicked out. Wah! Um, look at me and my like animation skills up in here. Okay, a new GTP attaches. That's going to then like shimmy over somewhere else and do some kind of activation of something, okay? Whatever that activation is, we don't really care. It's just gonna activate something. And one of those things, um, that, that you should be familiar with is the adenylil cyclase, but we can talk about that when we talk about transduction, okay? So, uh, going back here, our first step is reception. We looked at the GTCR, um, in terms of the RTK.
That's the one with like the two things, right? And then they connect.
Yep, exactly. So they kind of look like this on the membrane, and they're not together. And they have these three tyrosines. Tyrosine, uh, tyrosine is an amino acid. So if this guy here is just like a protein, then it just has three spots where there's tyrosine. And tyrosine can be phosphorylated. Um, remember that means like the addition of a phosphate group in there?
Isn't that with cross phosphorylation? Those are needs to, and then they combine and like, or.
Yes, so we're, this guy, he's gonna like slide over once the, you know, you need the ligand to bind first. Right? So two ligands have to bind to two different RTK molecules. They both become, um, dimerized or joined together. And that's where they're gonna do that cross phosphorylation. Right? And so they add phosphates to each other, and at that point, they're then active, and then can phosphorylate other things like other, um, kinases or whatever.
And when it's together, it's called like a dimer, right? Okay.
So die for two, mur for unit, so a two unit. Cool?
That was, yeah, that, that actually makes sense in biology. There's very few times where that actually works.
It happens, right? And then as soon as these guys like blah 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 do their own thing, that's gonna, oh, interesting. That's gonna deactivate it, defoscoralate it, or there's actually gonna be other enzymes that come in and are like, yoink, get rid of the phosphate groups, and, and kind of reset it back to zero. And that's a really important concept, is that any time there's something that you can turn on, you have to be able to turn it off. Cool?
Yeah.
Cool, okay. So, um, G protein coupled receptor, RTKs, and, oop, that should be a G. Nope. Uh, and then the last one was the ion channels, okay? This one's super easy. There is an ion channel.
Something binds to the ion channel, ion channel opens, and then the chow.
Exactly. Where do we see it?
Um, N A and K.
Good.
Sodium and pro, um, potassium channels.
Good. And now, for those ion channels, they're actually not ligand gated, meaning it's not that something lands on the outside and binds to it and causes it to open. Instead, what that's gonna be there is the membrane potential changes. So we have a charge. But you're in the right ballpark thinking about neurons, um.
But it lands on the membrane, the ER, and the Google.
Yep.
Okay.
On the Golgi, so once, that's gonna be one of them. Also, um, on the synapse. So I'm going forward all the way here to communication. In the nervous system, we looked at the synapses, and one of those, um, is gonna involve neurotransmitters being released, which can then bind to ion channels to cause them to open, to then allow something to flood in. I'll go over that in a second, but I just wanted to make sure we're making some connections there with the reception and with things that we actually have talked about. Cool?
Yep.
Cool. Alright, let's look at reception, or at, sorry, transduction, because this is where it gets a little bit more complex. And also, uh, test and review materials. I could've sworn I made like a picture. Yeah, unit five images. I'm gonna drag down here and put it in here. Nope, right there. Um, so, where was my mind? Okay, if you take a look in there, there's quite a few images that are gonna make more sense than what I'm about to draw. I wish I could like, oh wait, maybe I can pull it in, whatever. Um, so for transduction. Right, that second step. Um, we've really talked a lot about second messengers. And phosphorylation cascade. How familiar do you feel with both of those?
Um.
Go over them?
Yeah.
Guys?
I was like, okay, that, hmm, don't remember too much.
Okay, that's alright. That's why I'm doing the study session. Kind of bummed that it's just you, so hopefully a lot more people will, uh, watch the video.
Monday, and then I think that probably is gonna be everybody else's bet too.
Yeah, yeah.
Monday won't be on, so.
Gotcha. Hey, that's lucky. Alright, so with second messengers, what you need to know is that they are, what are the characteristics of, of them?
Um, second messengers, they are, aren't they like, non, no, that's not why. Um, I think they're polar, and that they basically just take whatever was given and.
Yeah.
Respond. I don't know how to word that.
No, that's okay. So, right, they're polar, and the reason they need to be polar is because they're gonna be in the cytoplasm, right? So we have something that signals on the outside. The second message is within the cytoplasm. And so it needs to be polar so that it can diffuse, and it's also gonna have to be really small so that it can diffuse quickly. Uh, think of it as, um, like, it just, the smaller it is, the more rapidly it's going to be able to move from where it's made to kind of spread out, right? So it needs to be small, polar, and it is non-protein. I don't know why, it just is, okay? So we're thinking things like ions, like calcium or cyclic AMP. So those are gonna be the two big guys that you should know about, cyclic AMP and calcium ions, okay? Um, and the calcium, one of the pathways that we talked about is the IP3 DAG pathway, so I wanna go through both of those with you and make sure you're good. Um, let's start cyclic AMP. So a common G protein, um, like activated G protein. Uh, G protein, and it's got its GTP. So a common, like, place that it, or a common enzyme, there's the word, that it activates, I mentioned this earlier, is adenylyl cyclase. And adenylyl cyclase is an enzyme that's gonna take ATP and convert it into cyclic ATP, or cyclic AMP, sorry. So the adenyl, meaning we're referring to adenosine cyclase, meaning we're like making it into a cyclical molecule. So we take our ATP that looks like this. Okay, and then what adenylyl cyclase is going to do is cut these two phosphates off, and then make it cyclical. So kind of make a bond between this carbon and this phosphate group right here, or actually, I think it's an oxygen, doesn't matter. Anyway, it's making a bond between, um, this location and up here. So what you end up with is adenylyl cyclase, okay? Now that adenylyl cyclase, or sorry, cyclic AMP. Okay, that cyclic AMP is gonna be, be made really, really rapidly, and it can diffuse really, really quickly. And one of the common targets that it, it activates is protein kinase C. You don't really need to remember that, but it's, it's just showing that this links to another step, right? So, the, let's go back here. The G protein is active, it activates the adenylyl cyclase, that converts ATP to cyclic AMP. And then that can do other things, right? And if we just keep adenylyl cyclase going and going and going, we're just gonna keep making more and more cyclic AMP. So the adenylyl cyclase is eventually turned off, the G protein has to be turned off, and we also have to like deactivate the camp, because the camp will just keep on activating other things. So we need on switches and off switches. And in this case, the cyclic AMP can be converted into just regular AMP, and that's going to be done by the, um, enzyme called phosphodiesterase.
Okay.
I think, I'm ninety-nine percent. Let's hope I'm right. Yeah, you know, because I'm the teacher. Um, so cyclic AMP, first, second messeng- like the, the first, second messenger that you need to know. The other one is gonna be calcium, and you were right, where do we keep calcium?
Um, in the, in the membrane, but like.
What's this one?
I think it's the ER.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
In the ER and in the mitochondria as well. Um, and in both of these cases, we're gonna have calcium ion channels. And those calcium channels are going, oop, allow Courtney to join. Courtney, can you hear me? Oh, she's on silent. I don't know if she can hear me.
She's on silent. You need to turn, when you get on, you need to turn your mic on, and then you need to turn on your video. It takes a little while.
Yeah. I'm still learning, I'm sorry.
It's all good.
Mute everyone else. I don't wanna do that. Ooh, that was exciting.
We hear noises.
There we go. Can you hear us, Courtney?
Yeah.
Yay, awesome. Okay, can you see my screen okay?
Yeah, I don't know how to use this thing, but okay.
Yeah, me neither, but I, so if you've got questions, just holler them out.
Okay.
So here's kind of where we're at right now. Um, I've been working just with Katrina and going through basically from the get-go. And one of the first things that we mentioned was going to the test and review materials in Schoology. I've got an outline of the topics and kind of the big picture stuff that you should be familiar with. Oh, and I don't know why, but my numbers all went away. That's okay. So I'm starting with cell signaling. Um, and we've already looked just generally at, what is that? Ooh, bubbles, um, at that process, right? So reception, transduction, and a response.
Okay.
I'm gonna have the entire thing posted on YouTube, hopefully by tonight, as long as this is actually recording. If it's not, well, oof, um, there we go. So that's kind of where we're at, and now I'm looking specifically at, oops. Where am I? Here we go. Um, we're looking at transduction. We just looked at how cyclic AMP is made, and now we're taking a look at calcium as a second messenger, and how to get that calcium released. So far, so good?
Yeah.
Cool. Alright, so, okay, important thing to know about calcium, right, is that it is constantly being pumped out of the cytoplasm. So like out of the cytosol, either outside of the cell, or into the ER, or into the mitochondria. So the mem, the, um, amount of calcium in the actual cytosol is really, really low. And so if we open up these calcium channels, then we're gonna have calcium flowing out really, really fast. And that can affect, um, the way different things work. I'll give you an example of that in a little bit. So in that case, what we're gonna be looking at is again, a first response or a first, um, first signal from a ligand that causes some kind of receptor to do something. And if that happens to activate an enzyme called phospholipase C, right? Again, you don't need to, you don't need to memorize the names of the enzymes, but it, it's good to know kind of the process in general. But what phospholipase C is going to do is take a molecule that's embedded in the membrane, okay? Okay, this molecule has a hydrophobic part right here, and that allows it to stay anchored to the membrane. And a hydrophilic part, which allows it to kind of float around in the cytoplasm, um, if it's cleaved off. So remember, when we're looking at second messengers, we want small, polar, non-protein. So this is small, this part right here is polar. And so what phospholipase is gonna do is kind of thaw off right there, that bond, and, and release this part of the molecule on the bottom. That's called IP, ooh, IP two. I threw. IP three. Is that right? I'm right, I'm right. Okay. Anyway, so we're gonna make a whole bunch of IP three. So long as phospholipase C is active, then we're gonna be making this IP three. So far, so good? Okay?
Yeah.
So that IP three is going to be now a ligand, but it's a second messenger, because the initial ligand happened outside of the cell. Right out here, right? First message, here's our second message, and this guy's gonna float over to the calcium channel and act as a, uh, ligand here that then opens up the calcium channel so that we can have that flood of calcium coming in. Cool?
Yep.
Okay. Um, like I said, stop me if I need to slow down or, or clarify anything. Um, so those are your two second messengers. The other big important thing you need to know about, um, transduction cascade are going to be anything having to do with kinases and phosphorylation, right? Big idea here is that if we have an inactive molecule, a kinase can add a phosphate group to a protein and potentially activate that molecule, right? And a lot of times, kinases themselves are only active when they've been phosphorylated. So we can have the, let's start from the beginning, right? A ligand binds to some kind of receptor to cause some kind of response to eventually activate the first kinase. Okay, maybe this is protein kinase C that becomes active when cyclic AMP is present. So then this kinase can phosphorylate, add a phosphate to another kinase, which is inactive, to cause it to be active. And this kinase here, once active, can add a phosphate group to another kinase. To another kinase, to another kinase. And it just kind of keeps going for a while, um, to really amplify the signal and pass that signal along quickly. Cool? Everyone good?
Yeah.
Okay. How are you doing, Katrina?
Pretty good.
Okay, cool. So that's, that's kind of the basics, right? The reception, transduction, response, like I said earlier, the response piece, we're really gonna get into when we talk about all of this stuff. So I'm not gonna go too much into it here. Um, keep this calcium piece in mind, because we are going to see it again when we're in nervous. Cool? Alright, so that's really it for, for cell signaling, other, there we go, other than just knowing what the types of signals are. And it doesn't, it doesn't really matter so much, um, when we're thinking about what's happening on the inside. What does this button do? Can you see that there's a button right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you see what I'm rolling, scrolling over right now, like my control panel, like right now, my Katrina's face? Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was just curious. Um, I don't know like what y'all can see and what's like just, so, anyway, ADHD, fun times. So, uh, ba 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 ba, okay, types of signals, not super important, but I'll mention them. Super important, but I feel like you're, you're starting to get the gist of it. Okay, so we have our cell. We have our receptor, a transduction cascade, and some kind of like wow, response. And so what that ligand is can be from a number of different locations, or from a number of different other cells. If that ligand is attached to another cell membrane, for example, uh, when we look at the immune system, there is a lot of cell-to-cell contact, which is something into play here, just erase this guy. So maybe this ligand is embedded in the cell membrane of another cell. Um, that's going to be our cell-to-cell signaling, okay? If a cell actually has to secrete something, right, so it's got a vesicle, and then it moves the vesicle to the cell membrane, and then secretes whatever it's got, what is that kind called?
I wanna say, um, endocrine?
No.
So, endocrine, you always need to include the.
The blood system or blood vessel.
Oh, right, right, okay.
So in this, in this case, if we're just dumping it into the interstitial fluid, or into like, into the local environment, these guys are gonna be thinking, paracrin, yeah? Um, endocrine, like you just said, if we're like secreting it and it's going into, into the blood, eventually diffusing out of the blood and, and landing on a receptor here, that's gonna be our endocrine. Um, hormones are used in the endocrine, neurotransmitters are used in the nervous system. Um, neuro-endocrine kind of links the two together, okay? Do I need to go over too much there? I don't think I'm gonna be too particular on the test with, with those, so.
I kind of got for the most part. I used to use auto print.
Okay, yeah, autocrin is, okay, autocrin happens when a, so I'm looking at this cell right here, right? If I'm looking at this guy and he secretes some, yeah, some of it's gonna be paracrin, because the cells near him might have a receptor. If it just so happens that this guy also has a receptor for the stuff that he just secreted, it can also self, like, um, like self.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So autocrin is if it happens within the same cell, and paracrin is what happens within two different cells.
With two different cells that are close to each other, so they're just going in the, in the interstitial fluid. Cool? Okay, um, do I need to go over apoptosis, cell cycle, control, cancer, or development?
I got apoptosis.
Cool.
And cancer pretty well.
Okay.
Control is cell cycle. I'm pretty sure it's just like something saying that you can't, like it's like the, the stop on the M1. Okay, then we go on that. And development, I think you might wanna go over.
Is development with like the, what is that called? It was something in our one quiz, that was like, it divides a bunch of times before it grows.
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, I might know that.
Okay, yeah, so, the biggest thing there is, is really with development, there are going to be a whole bunch of signals that have to kind of happen sequentially to start turning genes off and, and allowing that cell to become more specialized. So, um, right, let's say this is your, your fertilized egg, this is called the zygote. And so there's these different chemicals that are present in different concentrations throughout the cell, maybe their mRNA, proteins, whatever. And they can kind of act as, um, signaling molecule. And they can kind of act as um signaling molecules for the cell itself. And so when this zygote splits, let's say he splits right across here. You can see that the bottom cell ends up with a lot more of whatever my blue polka dots are, the top cell ends up with less. That means right off the bat, what's in the cytoplasm is different between them, and that is called cytoplasmic determinants.
Yeah, there's not enough, the cell can die from that, right? Like the other one won't, like if there's not enough, um what are they called?
Like cytoplasmic determinants or or like
Yeah.
or whatever. So I'm going to go with science doesn't really know. Um, for some reason, it appears that when the zygote is first uh splitting into a two-cell and then into a four-cell, uh scientists used to think that was just kind of at random, depending on where the um centrals were and and how it pinched in the membrane on the outside, it's looking like that's a lot more controlled than we originally thought. So I'm going to just be like, ooh, question mark, I I don't, I don't know how knows where to divide and how to uh make sure each cell gets the right cytoplasmic determinants. But um eventually, what you end up with is a whole bunch of cells, right? And now these are all influencing each other. So this guy might, you know, secrete out some stuff that tells this guy where it, where it's at and so on and so forth. So we start to end up with like a pattern formation. And this is where this ball of cells eventually starts to just not decide, but figure out what is the front, what is the back, what's the left, the right, the top, the bottom, okay? Uh, so that's our pattern formation or um, yeah, pattern formation. Then it starts to um specialize even more and figure out what should go in different areas. And so that's just our general shape-taking form or morphogenesis. And then once we have our general shape, right, of like a believe it or not, that's going to be our baby, and little limb buds are gonna be here and here, and hopefully that tail goes away down the line. Um, then we can start specializing in making the heart and making the lungs and figuring out how the stomach needs to go and growing these legs to actually become legs instead of little buds, and that's going to be the organogenesis. Okay.
Okay, so um, sorry, I just interrupted you. But um, for the cytoplasmic determinants, what is their purpose per se, like?
They act as signal molecules, and I I don't wanna say like signal molecules like ligands, um more like second messenger type things that are already present in the cell. And just by virtue of that cell dividing the first time, the second time, the third time, whatever, that's going to mean that each of the cells is already different, it's composed of different stuff. Um, so like their purpose might just be good question, what would their purpose be? You know, just, just kind of the precursors to whatever else needs to be made eventually anyway. Um, just chemicals that you'd naturally find that would have been in the, in the mother's egg that when it became fertilized, the different concentrations just signaled that it's different parts of the cell. I don't know if that helps at all.
No, no, that helps.
Okay, are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't wanna confuse you more, um, so if I'm talking too much or rambling, just, just shut me up and say, yep, I get it, okay. Um, and so as a cell is, is, or sorry, as an organism is kind of dividing, you've got cell division. And uh specialization are gonna be really important. And then that organogenesis and morphogenesis, so I don't even know what I'm numbering anymore, but just know that the cells are dividing, they're becoming specialized, meaning they're turning off the genes that they don't need. Um, they're going from toty potent, which means potential to become any type of cell in the entire body, to pluripotent, which just means a little bit more specialized, to multipotent, which means even more specialized, and finally, like specialized cell. Okay?
Yeah.
So in other words, turning off genes, turning off genes, turning off genes, turning off genes, and just making sure that the only genes are expressed that we need in that type of cells. We can look at this in terms of the immune system, right? Our specialized cell here might be a mature B cell, like B memory cell. So a multipotent cell is gonna be that B cell that hasn't been activated yet. That could potentially become a memory cell, it could potentially become um an active B cell that is secreting antibodies. So, and then before that, remember I talked about like the hematopoietic stem cell? That's the one that could potentially be a B cell or a T cell or a um red blood cell, any of those, so. A pluripotent cell can't really do much, but if you turned off enough genes, it could. I almost liken this to like babies, right? We say about kids that, you know, they can be whatever they want, and then as they go through school, they kind of narrow what they're interested in and then narrow what they learn and and then become really specialized in one thing so that they can contribute to society. Um, yeah, I don't know if that helps or hinders, but I'm gonna run with it. How are we doing? Did you lose? All good?
All good. Yeah.
Okay, um. apoptosis, I think we're pretty good, control of the cell cycle. Um, cancer, you just need to know about P fifty-three and um RAS, there we go, I couldn't think of it there for a second, make sure you're solid with, you know, RAS and P fifty-three.
Right, benign and malignant.
Yes, you'll wanna know about uh malignant versus benign tumors, yep.
Got that part.
Cool. Uh, development, I think, if you take a look back, I also posted on my YouTube page, the, the video for development. So hopefully um I make a little bit more sense in that than what I just did. Uh, okay. Body systems, big picture, as animals are getting more and more complex, they need more types of control. One thing I've already referenced is the fact that there's interstitial fluid, and I feel like people are a little bit confused about this. So keep in mind that in a big multicellular organism, let's say these are the cells, if I like zoom way, way in, there's gonna be tissues that connect them together. And then there's going to be blood vessels that kind of go through. And those blood vessels are going to be delivering oxygen and picking up waste. Um, and it's not exchanging it directly with the cell, right? It's not like set one cell to one cell, instead it's one type of fluid to another. So the blood plasma exchanges stuff with the interstitial fluid. And then the interstitial fluids, whoops, go away. Some reason my ah, my iPad just decided to pop up something that I really don't need, my calculator, there we go, okay. Anyway, the interstitial fluid is what's going to be what exchanges material with the environment. So in very, very early animals that might have like, let's say for example, sponges that lived in the water anyway, didn't need a circulatory system because they were already exchanging material directly with their environment, whereas like mammals obviously don't have that luxury, okay? Um, what else to mention there? Endothermy, negative feedback, positive feedback, organs, organ systems. All good with that?
So, do you mind going over just quickly again? Is endotherm
Yeah.
absorbs energy or I forget, like I just forget sometimes?
No, it's totally good. Good, um, endothermy is an organism's ability to produce its own heat. So, endotherm.
Oh, okay.
Makes heat, right? And so where is it gonna be making that heat from?
It takes, doesn't, I know it uses the outside environment, but it can use like different things like um your, like energy level kind of sort of, I don't know how to word that, like if you need to like move and then
So what specifically should you be thinking about if you're thinking about heat and energy? Not organ, what organelle? Okay, so for us to make heat, what has to happen is we have to take sugars and other stuff and have that metabolic process break them down. And instead of being really efficient and taking, you know, food and converting it into like ATP, now we need a lot of that energy being used to also produce heat as a byproduct, which means endotherms typically have a lot less efficient mitochondria. Right? Instead of making the maximum number of ATP, they're, they're doing a lot to waste energy, and I'm using waste here in part, in, you know, air quotes, because that energy is getting used as heat instead of just purely as ATP. Right, where? Go ahead.
Wait, I kinda like don't know how to word this. Uh, so, chondra is, is that why like the mitochondria has like different numbers of ATP that are made each time? Okay.
Exactly, yep, yep. Uh, if you're an ectotherm and you're super duper efficient, that's great, but that's gonna cause some limitations because if you are an ectotherm, you're getting the heat from your environment, right? Lizards, for example, well, that's why you're not gonna find um cold weather lizards because they can't survive in, in Alaska, they have to be in a desert or or in an environment that's very, very warm all the time. Um, and so that's not to say that they're cold-blooded, like they're, they stay warm, it's just they're not making it themselves. If you're an endotherm and you can make your own heat, that means you can kind of venture into areas that haven't been colonized already by ectotherms, so in terms of evolution, it's kind of a cost benefit. The benefit is that you get to go new places um and have new habitats that, where there's less competition, but at the expense of wasting a lot more energy and therefore needing to ingest a lot more food to be able to, to live. Cool, cool?
Yep, yep.
Okay, uh, negative, positive feedback, feeling solid?
Yeah.
Cool, cool. Um, okay, endocrine versus nervous system. What questions have you got for me? Cause I'm, I'm sure those ones are fun.
I mean, the endocrine is just through the bloodstream, right, it's like the idea that neurons kind of like transfer up and down um axons and stuff so that way like if you touch something that's hot, you're like, ow, that's hot, and then you don't touch it anymore.
Exactly, a lot, a lot faster. Endocrine, we're thinking uh slow but long-lasting, right? I don't need to continue, if I touch something hot, I don't need to keep sending the signal to keep my arm back. So for that rapid stuff, it's not only rapid but really short-lived. Uh, whereas with the endocrine, it is slow to get going, but then lasts a really long time, like you know, hours or days or even weeks. Um.
That can be even like different systems, right, like the um digestive system, for example, like the idea that if you eat something, then insulin is released um to break down the sugar.
Yeah, yeah, and um, so another thing that I did, and I really encourage you ladies to check that out, is I made a study, guys. He's getting a monkey, sorry, my daughter just brought me something, come here, you wanna say hi? I can't, you're coloring it right now, cause I'm doing something. Can you say hi?
Hi.
Yeah, it's Katrina, I'm pointing at watching you right now, I'm teaching them stuff. Do you wanna draw them a picture on, on my tablet? What are you drawing? Try again. No, you gotta start. Awesome.
Oh, I like that. Lovely star.
Can you write, I love you? I figure we all need a break, right?
Yeah.
And I get to cut, so. This star, am I gonna erase the whole star or just that part? What, just that part? Back to that. Good job. Why, good? Alright. That is, okay, so can you say goodbye?
Bye.
Oh, yeah, show her, came and
not right now, cause
Alright, how about I teach the rest of my day like this? Alright. Okay, no, 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 but okay, I can't actually see, so. Ah, okay, uh, oh, there we go, I love you guys. Okay, sorry, um, so what I did for you guys was kind of made uh body systems notes that summarized, I think, a lot of everything that we went over with body systems, three and four. Um. Did I do everything? Yeah, okay, um, so basically I took the prompts that I gave you guys yesterday and answered it as absolutely thoroughly as I could. Um, obviously, I had more time than you guys and, and I know a little bit more stuff, so I wasn't looking for you to post this in your essay. But um
Through that, and I was like, I really hope this is what she wanted, cause this was not, okay.
No, I mean
Yeah, we would've, we definitely failed, then uh Yeah.
But I, I, I do wanna make sure that you're able to pull some of this out, and I know um different groups presented to different levels. To be honest with you, the AP exam is looking for you to know examples of something, right? So if you did the excretory system, if you can bring in the example that you already know from the excretory system, it doesn't really matter if you know the other stuff, so it's cool and it's interesting, but I just needed you guys to know a lot about one system. So jokes on you, you don't need to know all of this, but for the test on Wednesday, I will want you to know the basics of all of this. So if you scan through this and you know seventy-five percent of it, you'll be in really good shape.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and kind of throughout, I don't think I was as explicit as I could have been. Um, but for example, when we talk about the heart rate increasing, you should automatically connect that to either the endocrine or the nervous system. Even if you don't know which one it is, you should, you should know that the thing controlling all of these different responses is the endocrine or the nervous system, one or the other or both, most of the time it's both. Um, ones that you might need to be familiar with, antidiuretic hormone. Hormone is in the name, so you know it's an endocrine. Um. Obviously glucagon and insulin. But yeah, anyway, so there's that to cover the other two, and I think the only other big thing that we have not talked about so far is the membrane potential and an action potential and then synaptic communication. So should I go over that? Do you guys feel solid? Where are we at?
Um. Well, I don't really know, like I remember talking about like the different levels and stuff, but I don't remember like anything specifically at all about like the end, action potential or anything, I don't know.
Yeah, that's fine, so let's take a sec, um, I will walk you through literally how I remember it because I, I still have to think this through every time. So all you need to know to start, get rid of my pronunciation, okay? All you need to know to start is that we have the sodium potassium pump.
Mm-hmm.
And so if you know that the sodium potassium pump is uh two K in, then everything else starts to follow logically, okay? So if I know that I'm pumping in K and out sodium. Looks like I'm reading Batman, no, 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 okay, whatever. Um, and I remember that I'm pumping in two positive charges and out three positive charges, then I know that the inside slightly negative and the outside is slightly positive, then I can go from there. And the outside is slightly positive, then I can go from there, I can work with that, okay?
And seventy something and then the, it goes like. That, yeah, neg- negative seventy and then it goes to like negative fifty and.
Yep, negative fifty-five. And then up to about positive, I don't know, thirty-five ish, but it doesn't really matter, so. The two things that I know is that the sodium potassium pump is pumping in K and pumping out N A. The other thing I know is just the general shape of the action potential curve, so if you can remember that it kind of goes like this. Then you're good, and let me show you why, okay? Sounds pretty straight, okay, I'll take it, okay. Are you, are you following me so far?
Yeah.
Okay, so I know that I'm at negative seventy. Or negative fifty-five, if I just remember that something happens at negative fifty-five, I'll be good. And I know that when I get to negative fifty-five, that's my threshold. And something happens where all of a sudden it gets really, really positive. So what is the only way that my inside, the inside of my cell is gonna be positive? I know that it has to be that the sodium comes in, right, because sodians are positively charged. It wouldn't make sense for the potassium to suddenly go out, because that would make me more negative, cause I'm having a positive charge exit the cell. Does that make sense? Okay, yeah, so that's kind of how I remember, I, like if I know that at threshold, I'm rapidly becoming positive. Then it explains to me the reason for this depolarization.
Look.
What's up bud?
I have a beautiful map.
Beautiful, oh, this is what Josh made.
Oh, I like that. Hi.
This is, I'm right in the middle of something good. Yeah. It is the butterfly one, there you go. Good job, okay, depolaration, i- vation, we're gonna pretend that I know what I'm spelling. That is, depolaration is what it looks like, anyway, so I know that I'm looking at depolarization. And that I must have had sodium ions come in really fast. So that must mean that at threshold, my, need a smaller options here. You go with a different color, that my N A channels open. Okay, and remember these are voltage gated channels, which means that they're going to open and close based on the voltage. Or the membrane potential that is, um, in their environment, so if the sodium channel is open. Depolarization happens when sodium rushes in. Something else must happen here to cause my direction to go the other way, and what would cause me to come, to become way more negative? Well, that would be that the potassium then exit, so that must mean that my potassium channel is open. And potassium exits during my phase of repolarizing, because now I'm. Going back to being really, really negative, okay? So at this point, now I don't have enough, um, of a concentration gradient. That if my sodium channels reopened, which by the way, they close. Okay, so down here, while I'm down here, if my sodium channels were to open up again. It wouldn't matter because there's not enough of a concentration gradient to depolarize me again. So in this little short period of time, I'm in the refractory period. And that basically means no action potential can occur. Okay, what's gonna restore my resting membrane potential back to about negative seventy-ish?
If the, um, but if the sodium and like, like basically it just kind of like shifts down like a lot, I don't know how to word that, but like.
Yep. Get everything back to where they were originally. And what originally set up my membrane potential is that sodium potassium pump working, so. This part right here is just my sodium potassium pump, and that's going to reestablish the resting membrane potential. Okay? Did you follow that?
Yeah.
Okay, remember I'm gonna post this so that helps to kind of re-watch that and skip over the part where my son was the butterfly. Um, or watch it again, cause he's really cute, but anyway, um, if you do need to re-watch it, hopefully it makes a little bit of sense. So what matters here is we've got the cell body and the dendrites and the long axon. And so we send this signal down, right? Positive on the outside, negative on the inside, and all of a sudden it flip flops and then goes back and it's really, really fast, right? But that signal is going to head down, head down, head down, head down, until it gets into. The end, and I'm gonna call this guy a terminal button or bulb or a terminal knob. There's like a thousand terms for it, and what happens here is all of a sudden, we've been positive on the outside, negative on the inside. The positive switch that happens on the inside is now going to open calcium channels. Following so far?
Yep.
Okay, and remember I said earlier when we were talking about second messengers, that calcium can do all kinds of stuff? One of the things calcium does is restructures the cytoskeletons, okay? So in here, we've got this meshwork of cytoskeleton and we have vesicles. Full of neurotransmitters, so when the calcium comes in, it causes those, uh, that cytoskeleton to kind of reshape itself. And pulls the vesicles towards the very end. They're gonna do exocytosis, release the neurotransmitters, and those neurotransmitters can then land on a new dendrite. And eventually, if you get this dendrite to reach threshold, then a new action potential can occur. Lot of information, how are you doing?
Good.
Good, solid? Okay, um, I'm gonna go post this, if you guys have any other questions, let me know, otherwise I'll probably bop out of here. And, uh, give you a chance to digest all of this information.
Okay.
Good.
You think you're, Katrina, you said you're thinking you're pretty good?
Yeah.
Courtney, how are you doing?
Back on Monday.
Yeah, I'll be okay, I just need to like look over stuff and probably watch it a couple times, but.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, hey, um, if you've got any questions, you can text me. Or email me or message me on Schoology, I wanna make sure you guys are solid and feeling a little bit like more prepared. For Wednesday so that, you know, no panic attacks happen, so.
Uh, for the most part.
You're welcome.
For the most part, it's just like going back to the beginning was better, cause like the end, the stuff that we just did, I'm pretty good on, but like the. Beginning, I think, was the stuff that like, I need help on, so I think I'm pretty good.
Awesome, awesome, like I said, that question, yep, otherwise I am going to end my recording and end the session. So. Alright, I will see you guys on Tuesday.
Thank you.
See ya, bye.
Bye.